I'm sorry. We're ready to hear City Council Bill 19-0453. The purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 3127 East Baltimore Street, Block 1743 with Lot 002, as outlined in read-only accompanying plaque, from the R8 zoning district to the C1 zoning district. Spire and State Auto Public Notice requirements have been met. The sponsor of this bill is Councilman Cohen. Councilman Cohen, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you got the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the committee. We are very excited about this bill. It represents an opportunity for, to really enliven this street. We've seen a lot of growth, both residential and also sort of commercial in the north of Patterson Park area. There was just a recently opened pie shop called Pie Time that I recommend everybody check out. It's about a block and a half away. This project is the conversion of an old church that faces the park into a mixed-use building. It's taking advantage of some historic tax credits at the state. The community is in full support and is really excited for the potential to just really transform this area into a much more walkable, sort of feet-on-the-street experience. So would appreciate your support.
Thank you, Councilman. Any questions to Councilman Cohen? Sponsor? No? Okay. Let's go on to Agent's Report. Planning staff?
Yes. Sorry, Foxtrot is looking at my house right now. Sorry. Afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members. This is Matt DeSantis with the Planning Department. So we have an unusual situation with this bill hearing. This bill has actually not yet been heard by the Planning Commission, but it is in fact scheduled for the Planning Commission's meeting on Thursday. So at this point in time, there is no commission report to present to the committee. But, and being clear that there's no Planning Commission report, you know, I think it's still, it's fair to advise the committee that the Planning Department staff has some concerns with the bill justifying either the mistake or the change in character criteria. So I'm happy to answer any questions from a Planning Department perspective. But again, at this point in time, we have no Planning Commission report.
Okay. Thank you. Let me, before I go into any of my committee members, you're 100% correct. There is a Planning Commission hearing this Thursday. And I just want the committee members to understand is that we are not going to take a vote on this today. We're going to go into recess. We're going to have the Planning Commission have their hearing, hear the report from the planning staff. And then what I'll do is we will announce after Thursday, Planning Commission hearing and the recommendation from them in the planning staff, then I will announce a working session and a vote in the future. So thank you for your remarks. Any questions or concerns from the committee?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. You got the floor. Go ahead.
Is that me?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, Matt. What is, by what determination does, I guess, did the Planning Department recommend that churches be zoned residential versus commercial?
Yeah. Good question. So the, at this point in time, the department anticipates recommending to the Planning Commission as part of the, sort of the analysis portion. So the property was zoned, this particular property and almost the entire area, it's zoned R8 now. And it was zoned R8, at least since 1971, under the former zoning code. So the R8 zoning that existed before during Transform was maintained for this property as well as for most other properties. And the significant reason why for this particular church property, the R8 zoning was maintained and it wasn't, and it was not zoned C1 or some other commercial zoning district during Transform, was because the current zoning code also includes the brand-new neighborhood commercial establishment provision, which permits through the BMZA process that those certain neighborhood-focused commercial uses for historically non-residential buildings. So the huge benefit of, from a neighborhood perspective, of the church being zoned R8 and remaining zoned R8 is that certain uses, coincidentally, all the uses proposed by the particular development that's pushing this rezoning, office uses, you know, cafe, retail uses, those sorts of neighborhood appropriate pedestrian-focused commercial uses are permitted conditionally through the BMZA. So from a neighborhood perspective, it's a huge benefit for the neighborhood because it gives the neighborhood a lot more leverage in being able to go to the board and negotiate with property owners and go to the board and have certain neighborhood-specific conditions placed on uses to make sure that they are consistent and compatible with the neighborhood. Whereas a straight C1 rezoning allows all those neighborhood commercial establishment uses as well as some other uses, which maybe not, might not be the most appropriate for the middle of a rowhouse neighborhood as permitted by right. So the neighborhood has, so whether it's this property owner, any future property owner, the neighborhood loses that ability to kind of, they lose a lot of their leverage because uses are permitted by right and there's no opportunity for that neighborhood engagement. So that's a long explanation, which I hope answers your question of why the church during Transform was purposely maintained. It's R8 zoning designation.
Dorsey? Councilman Dorsey? Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess it's just really odd to me the consistent, is there any consistency about how churches are zoned from one place to the next? There's a church up the street from me in, you know, on a detached home street, and it is zoned just like the other houses on the street, but it's obviously not a house. It's obviously never, ever been used for a residential purpose. It's obviously constructed for a non-residential use, regardless of what that non-residential use is. It just, given that, it makes little to no sense to me that such a building would ever be designated as a residential zone property.
Sure. And so I think there's probably a couple ways to answer the question. I would imagine, so the zoning code in Baltimore and for the most part, in virtually all jurisdictions in the country because of some Supreme Court history, I'm sure Victor can speak to it, places of worship are permitted by right in all residential zone districts. So from that perspective, since a particular, a church or a synagogue or a mosque wouldn't need any particular, a different zoning designation for that use to be permitted, it could simply be from ones just for the sake of simplicity and uniformity, having places of worship zone residential because it's because a place of worship is permitted in that district, I'm sure, is a factor. And then also probably from the perspective of thinking, well, you know, and certainly historically, there might have been a notion of, well, in case this place of worship no longer is a place of worship, we would like to have the zoning designation for the land be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So zoning a place of worship with a commercial zoning district, I would imagine in many instances, the thinking would have been, well, in case the church goes away, we would like whatever else comes on that land to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood.
That's why we're here today.
Yeah. And again, so Eric Tissot is on the call. He was involved a lot during Transform. He can speak to some more beyond this.
Eric? Eric, you want to add to this?
Yeah, sure. So the fast version, since the 1971 codes, we have 50 years of practice where religious land uses are considered compatible in residential neighborhoods where they are sighted in large swaths of residential, like this particular site is, they are zoned residential. They are deemed to support the neighborhood, and that's why they're zoned that way. Matt is correct that a secondary benefit is that if the church ever goes away, you're not bringing in a commercial incompatible use into that structure. And then he also made reference to the Religious Land Use Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000, which came in when I was a new planner here at the city. And that really allowed for places of worship to go into, at the time, predominantly industrial districts where they were not permitted. And the reason for that is wherever you had land uses that permitted assembly of people, in that case, it was things like union halls, then you had to also allow for assembly for religious uses. But by and large, as a default setting, religious places of worship are residentially zoned. They are also allowed in commercial districts. And in some areas of the city, there were some competition concerns with displacing walkable commercial, but that's another long story.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yeah, I guess that still doesn't answer my, like, basic question. This is a structure that, so you talked about 50-some years or whatever of kind of precedent case law establishing all this about where residential, where churches can go, you know, in residential districts, which is, I think, the opposite side of the coin. I mean, this is a, this is a structure that was built long before that, right? I'm looking at the ESTAT record. It says that it was built in 1906. So long before that Supreme Court ruling. The question for me is the other side of the coin. Why this structure? Why this property that as far back as our records go has been a non-residential use should ever be determined to be a residential property? That is what doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay. Sorry if we weren't clear. I think the reason for that is places of worship were considered compatible in residential areas and that you don't want to have them commercially zoned. And let's be clear, residential districts are for more than just residential uses. You can have things like schools, hospitals, places of worship, daycare centers, things of that nature that are considered compatible with homes that are allowed in that same district, yet are not so intense in use that they can potentially create problems for those homes. So that's the reason.
But how, so is it by coincidence that our zoning code permits a place of worship by right also in every single commercial zone district?
No, that's by design principally because of Arlopa from 20 years ago.
What is that?
I'm sorry. It's Religious Land Use Institutionalized Persons Act. To be compatible with legal requirements, we can't allow places of assembly in commercial zones where you can't also allow places of worship. So that's why they're deliberately included there as well.
Okay. Well, then I still, I don't think this really, I still don't understand why a non-residential use property should be deemed residential by, you know, in name. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other committee members? Councilman Clark, you got the floor. Councilman, can I unmute yourself?
Oh, I did. You can't hear me?
Yeah, I could.
Okay. All right. So first of all, I did not, I got an agenda for tomorrow's Planning Commission, and I did not see this issue on that agenda. Now, is it really on that agenda? And I wonder if it really matters. Because, Mr. DeSantis, you could, if you would, the planning staff is taking the negative position and referring to neighborhood commercial establishments. And theoretically, the hearing is no longer necessary because of the length of time of this session today from the time of introduction. In other words, we've long passed the place where you must have a Planning Commission report, negative or positive. And somewhere in what I read, it said if, as long as there was a, as long as there was a Planning Commission report by third reader, that was, planning would be happy. It wasn't required, but it is the way we operate and makes sense. We know probably it's going to be negative because of the, in being in love with neighborhood commercial establishments, that whole issue. So here's my concern, and maybe you can help me, or... We have two council meetings left. I don't have any dog in this race, all right? Except that I know the neighborhood only because the whole Clark family and Hagan family grew up in St. Elizabeth Parish in that area. I mean, that's where everybody is from. But nobody called me from the neighborhood. But basically, just as a matter of logistics, it seems to me that we should hear the hearing now, make a decision, and perhaps, Mr. Chairman, vote. Because that way, we could be on second reader and then have another council meeting, the last one, the third reader, instead of trying to double-read at the very, and things will probably be chaotic. I just say all that. Mr. DeSantis, what do you think?
Yeah, so I'll first say that we ultimately defer to Vic and Legal Department as far as what the code says and what the requirements are. But I can just comment and give a little bit of the backstory of why it got to this point. When the bill was introduced last year, maybe last summer or last fall, planning staff met with the applicants and laid out on the table, hey, it sounds fantastic, but the zoning, we don't think we're going to be able to justify either a change or a mistake. But it looks to us like neighborhood commercial establishment is, like, allows you to do everything that you want to do. So we said, okay, well, you know, so like, can you give us a response as to why you need the rezoning, why neighborhood establishment? And then we never heard from the applicant again. So the planning staff's assumption was that the bill had died. So as soon as we heard that the bill was scheduled for a committee hearing, we then, in consultation with Law Department, in following their direction to just try and make sure that things, that, you know, that the letter of the law was complied with, we scheduled it for our first available hearing. So.
Councilwoman Clark, I had the same thought press that you have. I think what I want to do is, it's really not up to the planning staff. I want to hear from the Law Department. I think it's Victor because they take a new position. And I really want to make sure we keep us clean. And I want to hear their opinion. And if it takes us to have a Planning Commission hearing to the public and also with the staff, we can, I'm sure the President, Brandon Scott, will double-read if that's an issue.
I mean, we haven't even decided the issue. We still have to hear about, like, the community and everything else. Like, I think that Mr. DeSantis has been very helpful from my perspective. Let's see what happened. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to, yes, go ahead. Who's Councilman Stokes?
I think if we don't have all the reports in, why are we taking a vote on this now?
The only, Councilman, the only report, if I could have the floor, the only report we don't have is the planning staff and the commission.
Okay. That's fine. But if we don't have the planning staff report, why are we voting now?
Without voting, we're going to, I'm going to go to Victor.
I heard Councilwoman Clark talking about voting, or questioning me why. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's wait till we get to Victor. So right now, let's go to BMZA, so we stick with the decorum part. BMZA? Okay. I'm looking at BMZA has no objection. DOT?
Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT, we stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. Let's go to the Law Department. Before you testify, Victor, I want to make, I just want it known public, I want to make sure this is, we do it clean and have public testimony and the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. So I'm asking you, if you can, the avenue to keep us clean. Go ahead.
Right. So the Council was correct, Mary Pat Clark is correct, that under our local code, you've had the bill long enough that you can proceed without a Planning Commission report. The problem is we have a state law that says that when we're talking about a rezoning, you need to have a report from the Planning Commission. So we're looking for that report. And frankly, if that report doesn't have to say anything, it doesn't have to provide facts, it doesn't have to provide anything, you just need something back from the Planning Commission that they've looked at it. So what we're looking at today is presumably, we're looking for facts that someone is going to supply. It's not going to come from the Planning Department, but you're looking for facts that someone's going to supply. And if you have those facts, you can move the bill, but you can't actually end up adopting the bill until you actually have something from the Planning Commission saying that they've heard the bill and provide whatever they want to provide to you in terms of facts or no facts, or just whatever they want to do with that report. Mr. Chair, you're muted.
I'm good now. Any committee members? Want to chime in? No? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, who's this? Dorsey? Councilman Dorsey? Dorsey, go ahead.
Yeah, so, okay. So I understand that we could move the bill here in committee, but the full council can't adopt the bill? Is that what you're saying, Vic?
Yeah. You need, before you can actually adopt the bill, we're talking on third reader at that point, you need to have something from the Planning Commission saying that they've heard the bill.
I see. And, Mr. Chair, back to the Planning Department. Did we hear that the Planning Commission is planning to hear this bill tomorrow?
Thursday.
Thursday, this week?
Yes. Correct.
I just, I guess, Mr. Chair, I would, I would tend to concur with Councilwoman Clark that with only two meetings left in the term here, that it would seem to be preferable, honestly, from my perspective, to double-read the bill this coming Monday rather than double-read the bill on the very last meeting. And I'll give you my sense of context for this, is that the outgoing mayor will then have that night and that night alone to consider the entire pile of bills that's put before him. And out of respect for the outgoing mayor, I'd rather have those bills before him for, you know, two weeks rather than two hours. And so to me, the ability to expedite this and any other bills at this late stage in the term, just favorable in the public interest. That's, you know, so I would ask if it might be some reconsideration. I would want to move this bill today.
No. I understand. Good point. Let us go, since you, Councilman Dorsey, and Councilman Clark, and I think along the same lines, I want to give the courtesy to Councilman Cohen. I'm hoping he's still there to give his input because it's his district. Councilman Cohen, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Look, you know, I concur with my colleagues. You know, I think that for, there's, we have a letter of support from the Community Association. There's been, this has been over a year, there's been a lot of diligence from folks in the neighborhood. People are excited about this project. You know, if the committee sees fit to hear it and vote it today, I think that would be great to Councilman Dorsey's, I miss. I think it would give a bit of pressure off the outgoing mayor at the very, very end, off the council. But, you know, I also want to respect, of course, the Planning Commission and the Planning Department and their staff as well. So, you know, would prefer that it get voted today? You know, I'd certainly, this project has been in the public eye for a long time, but it also will differ tomorrow.
Okay. Councilman, thank you. I'm on the same lines with my two colleagues and yourself. What I have to go back is to Victor, is that we've got to go through the process of the other agencies. We've got to go through public testimony. Victor, if we do the finding of facts, here's my question, make sure I say it correctly. We do the finding of facts and we vote on the finding of facts. We just need for the planning staff to send us a letter on the report, a report letter, whether they support it or not, and that should be sufficient?
Yeah. That should be sufficient.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So let's go on to HCD.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock, for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report. No objection.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the BDC has actually changed its position on this bill within the last 24 hours based on additional information that was provided by council for the developer. I don't know that that has been received by the committee at this time. I know it was sent over late last night. If you prefer, I can read this into the record at this time.
Yeah. For clarity purpose, whether it's favorable or unfavorable, just let me know. Are you favorable or unfavorable?
We are in support of passage of this bill, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Parking Authority?
Good morning. Frank Amburzinski with the Baltimore City Parking Authority. No opposition to the legislation.
Okay. Thank you. That's with the Agent's Report. Let's go with public testimony. Matt, we have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I start, I'll just remind everyone one last time that if you would like to testify, please use the raise hand function in WebEx or the chat function to let us know if you're not able to find the raise hand button. We have Joseph Wolman for the applicant.
Mr. Wolman?
Good morning, almost afternoon, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, Mr. Wolman, Mr. Wolman, before you begin, uh, have you been watching and hearing the testimony from the committee?
I have.
Okay, uh, I think somebody's, has to mute, but what I need is, what we need is that we would need the finding of facts to move forward.
Correct.
So, go ahead, you got the floor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you are correct, and we did submit a written version of the findings of fact. This is not unlike the hearing we all had last week, where I read for the record, the findings of fact into the record. I'll go into my former district court prosecutor mode and try to read this quickly, uh, because I know you guys have been, been meeting for quite some time this morning. Um, uh, the, the findings of fact reads as follows, Land Use and Transportation Committee findings of fact, uh, most of the chair of Land Use and Transportation Committee after a public hearing at which agency reports and public testimony were considered in pursuant to sections 10304 and 10305 of Maryland Land Use Article and Sections 5508 of the Baltimore City Code. City Council adopts these findings of fact concerning the rezoning, 3127 East Baltimore Street, City Council Bill 19-0453 rezoning. Upon finding as follows with regard to population change, the population of the neighborhood continues to changes properties like the subject of this bill or redeveloped a variety of commercial residential uses. Number two, the availability of public facilities, adequate public facilities are available for a variety of uses. Number three, present and future transportation patterns of properties in close proximity to various transit routes. Number four, compatibility with the existing and proposed development for the area. The rezoning is compatible with all existing and proposed development in the immediate area. The recommendations, number five, recommendations of the city agencies and officials, including the Baltimore City Planning Commission, the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals. The planning staff has expressed an unfavorable position, and the planning commission will review the bill on November 12th, 2020. Uh, the BMZA recommends passage of the bill. I'd also add that the BDC is now in favor of the bill. Uh, number six, the proposed amendments' relationship to consistency with the city's comprehensive master plan. It does conform with the comprehensive plan, uh, live goal one, objectives one, two, and five, goal two, objective four, play goal one, and objective four. Number seven, existing uses of the property with, within the general area of the property in question, there are a mix of commercial residential uses, uh, in the general area. Uh, number eight, the zoning classification of other property within the general area of the property in question, there are commercially zoned properties in proximity to the subject property and in the general area, including C1 property one block away. Number nine, the suitability of the property in question for the use is permitted under its existing zoning classification. The property is not a rowhouse property as its existing R8 zoning would suggest. Number 10, the trend of development, if any, in the general area of the property in question, including changes, if any, that have taken place since the property in question was placed in its present classification. There are currently multiple development projects of mixed use and commercial nature in the general area of southeast Baltimore. Number 11, for rezoning based on substantial change in the character of the neighborhood, the following facts establish the substantial change since the time the last comprehensive zoning. There have been multiple changes to former industrial and, and institutional, industrial, and residential sites that are now being developed as mixed use and commercial properties in the general area. The population of the neighborhood is growing and changing. Number 12, for rezoning based on a mistake in the existing zoning classification, the following facts establish that at the time of the last comprehensive zoning, the council failed to consider then existing facts. The projects are trends which are reasonably foreseeable and/or events occurring subsequent to the comprehensive zoning have proven that council's initial premises were incorrect. It was a mistake to zone the site in R8 rowhouse district property. The church is no longer actively operating, and was being contemplated as redevelopment site in the direction of a community charrette over the last several years. With that, I'll submit the findings of fact, and, uh, my client, uh, the owner and developers, available for any questions as well.
Any questions from? Any questions for the committee?
For the developer?
Yes.
Me?
Any questions for the developer, to the developer from the committee?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um.
Very.
Your client was recommended to pursue a neighborhood commercial establishment solution. Um, do you have any comments on that, on that pathway?
Certainly. Um, thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Um, yes, neighborhood commercial is, is definitely, uh, an option for someone in a rowhouse, corner rowhouse building that used to be a storefront. Um, I, I think it's more appropriate in that situation to Mr., uh, to Mr., to Councilman Dorsey's, uh, uh, testimony earlier, or statements earlier, that, you know, this is not a rowhouse property clearly dating back to the early 1900s, it was not a residential property. Um, therefore, I, I don't know if neighborhood commercial is the most appropriate path. It is one you could take. I respect the planning department's position regarding neighborhood commercial. It's a highly useful tool in a lot of scenarios. Unfortunately, there are actually at least a couple uses, uh, that are not permitted under neighborhood commercial that we may consider, uh, for this project, including a financial institution, if you wanted to do a small bank branch, or a health clinic. I believe outdoor dining can also be an issue at times. Um, but the bottom line is, for, for a variety of reasons, the C1 zoning provides by right zoning uses that, as we try to attract tenants in a very difficult environment because of COVID-19, uh, we need to have that flexibility to attract commercial tenants. If a commercial tenant is looking at a property and they hire counsel and they see that it's a resident, residentially zoned property, it raises red flags and it has a chilling effect on our ability to attract business to a project that the neighborhood is very anxious about seeing get done. So, but for all those reasons, while I respect the planning staff's position regarding neighborhood commercial, requiring us to go to the zoning board, which there's no guarantee how that result would come out anyway, would, would be, would be difficult, uh, and more importantly, would make it, make it difficult for us to attract business to this area.
Thank you, Mr. Wolman. Go ahead, Councilman Clark, you still have the floor, go ahead.
No, that's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Matt, any other public testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does not look like we have anyone else who would like to testify.
Okay, um, before we go, uh, into the finding of facts, because there's no amendments, um, I, I just want to thank, uh, my colleagues, Councilwoman Clark and Councilman Dorsey, for your input on this, um, for the clarity and your concern. Um, I really appreciate it. It is a committee. So, at this time, um, uh, I'm looking, uh, for a motion to move the finding of facts.
I would move the finding of facts, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moved by, moved by Councilman Dorsey, second by Councilwoman Clark. All those finding of facts say aye, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Yeah. Somebody say nay?
Yeah.
Who?
Stokes, nay.
Stokes.
Stokes, okay, so, regards to motion of finding of facts, we have seven yes, findings with one no, which is Councilman Stokes. Um, there's no amendments. Do I have a motion to move the bill favorably?
I'd like to move the bill, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moved by Councilman Dorsey, second by, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Yes, Clark, second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. Uh, let's go to a vote favorable on the bill. White singer's a yes, Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed's a yes, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is a yes, Costello? Councilman Costello?
Um, I'm a yes.
Councilman Costello's a yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey's a yes, Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton's a yes, Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett's a yes, Stokes?
No.
Stokes is a no, let it be stated that we have one, two, three, four. We have seven yes with one no. Um, bill 19-0453 passes favorable, will come out November the 16th. Before I, I end, I just want to ask that either Councilman Cohen's office, or the attorney representing the applicant, uh, to call over to the planning commission to, uh, ask that the, uh, hearing, which is Thursday, I think it's either five, for them to postpone the hearing. Uh, I would appreciate it. Um, so, at this time, the bill passes, this is City Council Bill 19-0453, that's the last hearing. I want to thank all of my colleagues for, for attending. Uh, stay well and, uh, have a good day.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, these have been four very unusual but important issues. And, um, and I, I would ask for you to consider asking that they all be double read on the 16th if possible, so that the mayor will have time to hear out the rationales that I think have been so well explained here. Thank you.
No, I, I agree with you and Councilman Dorsey, and I will, I will pass that on. I will, I will request that, I mean, okay? Councilwoman? Okay, this concludes, uh, land use, uh, hearing.